I'm gonna look back, can you take me down? I'm gonna look back at Exodus 20, that's where we find the command. The famous ten commandments are given twice, but Exodus, chapter 20, if you want to look at it. And while you're there, some feedback from last week. I got a comment that somebody noticed that with Daniel, he had to be good at both science and language. And I hadn't thought about it that way, you know? He had to know the sciences, but he also had to know how to speak. And our children, often today, I think in education, we say that they're better at the languages, or they're better at that. And it's probably true, a child probably does tend to be one or the other. But I thought that was interesting, that it showed his whole growth. And then also, somebody in this group spoke about somebody else in this group giving good counsel about raising daughters for not just to be career, but also the aspects of mothering. That is certainly in the child bearing stage. And then those earliest years, many times, a woman will step out of a career. And so we were talking about, these are some of the thoughts, trying to raise a child holistically in all of these aspects. Anybody else have some feedback from last week? This discussion that you would like to share tonight before we get to tonight? Yes, Paul? You need to go watch the session online. It's something that's come up a couple of times now, the spiritual gifts, I think, or Spiritual Fruit, Jerem, I think you said you guys were reading the Spiritual Fruit. That was about a month or so ago. You told me your daughter knows all the Spiritual Fruit, or who the Spirit is. And that these are things that we can actually highlight and proactively teach to our children. So on Sunday, I was more in the spiritual gifts. But Julie found online, it's called Rachel Carmen. So Rachel, R-A-C-H-E-L, Carmen, C-A-R-M-A-N. And she's got these attitudes, like character traits, from the scriptures and nice things that you could color in. Trying maybe as a tool to use to teach, let's do this one this week. On Monday nights, we're gonna color this in, read this verse together, something like that. So just actively focusing on character development. Okay, let me pose a question for opening discussion. When someone is disrespectful, a two-year-old throws food in your face. A seventeen-year-old who, after being told "no" about sleeping overnight at a questionable event, swears loudly and the parents slam the bedroom door that's on their headphones. When someone is disrespectful, a spouse comes home from work, and she is uncharacteristically short-tempered, we won't say "he", and even rude with everyone. You go to Black Friday sale and people, I read a story about a twenty-four-year-old guy, this is in America, punching a seventy-eight-year-old woman to get the last sample of Nutella. Now Julie might do that. When you see disrespect, and think about this, what do you learn about that person? What are some things it could indicate? Sorry? Maybe they're just not thinking. Yes, the person who is acting disrespectfully. Maybe they weren't taught. Who knows their background? Okay, that's coming up later tonight. What about one culture says this is respectful, another culture says this is disrespectful? When we first came to South Africa, none of the youth would look me in the eye. Into an American that's very disrespectful, "look me in the eye." And they were showing me respect by not looking me in the eye. It really bothered me. These are all valid. Is it sometimes possible that somebody, when they're disrespectful, it's not actually an act of defiance? But have you ever been disrespectful to this person because of something that happened over here? And that's why I use the word "uncharacteristically." So when we see disrespect, it could be culture, it could be the person who's just a brat, it could be they weren't taught, it could be they weren't thinking. So when we're looking at our discussion tonight, we don't wanna just jump to only one cause. And I think something that's been interesting to me is your children move from phase to phase growing up. I've seen this. When they're discovering a new area of life, they're often disrespectful. We're not adjusting properly. So the two- and three-year-olds, they're learning that they actually can have an opinion. That's a good child development. It's inappropriate that they become disrespectful, but the disrespect is also part of them asserting a will. And we want them to develop. Same things with pre-teens and teenagers. They need to discover that I have a direction to choose, and often that demonstrates itself in disrespect. So to also take stock and say, "Why is this disrespect coming?" And sometimes a child comes home from school and be just, you know, just in a wad. And you find out a week later, something happened at school that day, and the whole class was in trouble or something. And they came home and their, and the response, their reactions are incorrect, but it's because of something else, and they don't know how to process it yet. And so it still needs to be corrected, but if we only deal with the surface and never try to develop the child and see what's going on, it's just behavioral change. And we're gonna come back to that a couple of times. Disrespect can indicate something about the child's parent, something about the child himself, something about the child's environment from that day, something that is actually going on in the child internally, physical changes as they hit puberty, bullying and things at the school, pressures from outside. And so we want to not just deal with what we're seeing, we wanna process also why. And why is this happening? This is in the book Making Home Work, this is chapter six. This chapter in his book was by far the most helpful to me. Not because my children are disrespectful, it's how he had the most practical insight for me. And so I'm gonna read a few lists that he gave, and this was one. Respect in the scriptures. And listen to this observation. In Romans 13:7, citizens are told to honor their government. First Timothy 6:1, Christian employees are to honor their employers. First Timothy 5:17, churches are to honor their leaders. Romans 12:10, church members are to honor one another. First Timothy 5:3, churches are to honor their widows. First Peter 3:7, husbands are to honor their wives. Ephesians 5:33, wives are to honor their husbands. Hebrews 13:4, husbands and wives are to honor their marital vows. Ephesians 6:2, children are to honor their parents. And as soon as I saw that list, I thought, that's true. There's a sentiment of honor and respect throughout the New Testament, in every relationship, from the authority figure and in reverse. And so we wanna cover some of that tonight. Let's think, first of all, as we go to Ephesians, chapter six, and he is referencing Exodus, chapter 20. I don't know that I had observed this before, that Exodus 20:12 does not say, "Obey thy father and mother." I know it says "honor thy father and mother," but I hadn't thought about it. It doesn't say "obey," it says "honor." Give me an example of obedience without honor. In your work setting, with children, give me an example of how you can obey and not give honor. Can you obey dishonorably? Did you ever disob, did you ever obey your mother disrespectfully? You can't do that. There you go. Yeah, so then we haven't obeyed this command. Can we honor, let's think about grown parents, grown children. So those of us who are outside of the home, who are independent, but we're still children. Can we honor our parents and not obey them? Is there a way to honor them, but still disobey their counsel? I'm gonna let an adult answer this one. Can you give an example of, maybe a hypothetical, you need to disobey your parents' counsel, Okay, that's a very difficult road, yeah. Eventually you might save it, I don't know if you believe so or not, I don't know. Okay, so maybe a matter of conscience, a matter of conviction. I can't do that. It certainly could come into play if you have unbelieving parents and you're a believer. I cannot do that. Even if a child is in the home, let's say a teenager has unbelieving parents, and the parents insist. We've had that where parents of our teenagers have asked them to do things that are illegal. And how do you handle that? So I love it that the scripture says, "Honor thy parents, honor your mother and father." And we intend to think that means "obey." And in Ephesians 6, he gives us both words. Ephesians 6:1 and 2, "Children, obey your parents in the Lord, for this is right; honor thy father and mother." He is not saying these are the same things. Obedience is the behavior. But we don't just want behavioral modification. We have to behave, but we want to also end up with honor. We want respect. So we're gonna use the word "respect," "honor," pretty synonymously. I'm sure you could differentiate, you know, the word choices. But let's think to this passage, and I wanna challenge us that we should actually choose respect. Regardless of culture, it may shape our understanding of it, time, that this is a conscious choice. When he gives this command in Ephesians, it's something that we choose. This is what we are going to do. And maybe we need to have a family discussion, because things need to change, you know? We're gonna do this, not just as dad and mom, excuse me, dad and mom, but it is actually commanded in the scriptures. God expects this of us, of parents, not to demand respect, but to expect respect, as he says, that we're choosing this as a guide for our home and for our family. And so to choose honor, and that's something especially as pre-teen and teenage years come on, that we actually have to teach our children how to disagree respectfully. So you know, you have a discussion about the daughter's clothing. She's going out for a date or something like that. At some point, there's gonna be disagreement, or about what music they're listening to, or what language, or friend choices. And as they get older, if they've gotta leave the home, eventually they're making all their own choices. And that spectrum of, "you have to honor me," and you have to, we can still disagree. And sometimes I will say, "I'm sorry, you have to still obey." But to say, to teach that behavior and honor are not the same thing. And as they're younger, we have a lot more control over their obedience, but as they get older, they need to still give us honor, even if they don't choose our exact way. But respect is a choice. And your culture can influence what that looks like. But the core concept of honor, I think, could be found in every culture. Every culture, give honor. I wanna spend more time at the end, some practical topics we can go through. Secondly, parents should teach respect. And I love this passage in Proverbs. Notice all the words that give objective, objective measurements. Objective measurements. He says, "Instruction, to attend to know, understanding; for I give you good doctrine; forsake not my law; at the end, keep my commandments." Those are very objective, black and white statements. This is right, this is wrong. This is right, this is wrong. Here's how to do this, here's what to do, here's what not to do. All of those objective statements. But what do you find in there that's very subjective? What words do you find in there that are not as easily measured? Proverbs 4, verses 1 through 4, in our lesson. If you're watching this, you'll have to download it. But Proverbs 4, verses 1 through 4, what are the words in that passage that are not yes, no, right, wrong? Easy beloved. Beloved, heart, there's another one. Tender. And also you can maybe look at the sight of my mother, that they were very observant, they were involved. And I love that he mentions both his mom and his dad. He paints this picture about both of them. "I was tender and only beloved inside of my mother; he taught me also, and said, 'Let my heart.'" So in all of this, this right, wrong, yes, no, do, don't, is ensconced in a mom and dad who just loved this kid, was involved in the sight, they watched. And it was a tender thing. And the father said, "My heart, keep my commandments." And sometimes we think parenting is just keep the commandments. Some parents tend that way, just keep my commandments. And some parents just say, "It doesn't really matter their behavior as long as I love them." Both are wrong. There has to be the law and the commandments and the doctrine and the instruction, but there needs the tenderness and the love and the observance and the heart as well. And so when we teach respect, especially on this, we wanna make sure that this is a very balanced thing, that respect is not just behavioral change. Respect is not, "When you walk in the room, you will trust me, you will shake my hand." It is all those things. But it has to also be with the other, or else they haven't actually got respect or honor. They just have a little trick that a dog can do, "When you hold the biscuit, I sit down." We're looking for more than that, if we want to fulfill the biblical command of arriving at respect. I'm gonna go just to the next one. I'd like to spend most of our time, or at least half of our time, on number three. But secondly, reward respect. So expect respect and then reward respect. And we've talked about this aspect underneath another topic, I think maybe session four. And so we're gonna say, praise your children for respect and reward your children for respect. I don't wanna spend a lot of time here, but let's make some observations here. And he's given us Proverbs 12:25. Similar to 3 John 4. 3 John 4, "I have no greater joy than here that my children walk in truth." And he's not talking about his actual children. And that's why I think these lessons are great for anybody that you can influence, help grow in the Lord. He's talking about an adult relationship there. But here in Proverbs 12, "Heaviness in the heart of man makeeth it stoop, but a good word makeeth it glad." We've talked about words from Ephesians, the idea that you parent and correct and instruct with your words. And he says, "A word fitly spoken, like apples of gold and pitchers of silver." What are some ways we can praise? And look at these verses, I just, I wrote down a couple. What are some different ways we can praise? And the most obvious one is with our words, so you don't get to say that one. What are some other ways we can maybe praise or communicate that we're happy with you? Body language, I wrote down posture, talks about stooping. You know, that if you're doing well, just, ah, my posture can communicate a lot. Okay, there's one other I have, but you can find a few more. Lisa, you're pin wagging, is that, you got a comment? We're coming to that one, talking about giving good gifts, but here specifically, the attitude of joy and gladness. So often these are tied together, but I thought it was interesting that scripture points out different aspects of that, that we show happiness and joy, enthusiasm, attitude, that it's not just words. You know, I could say, "You did a great job today." But if they see it, and if they know it, come on, you know? Different kinds of ways to express it. But I, body language, attitude or enthusiasm, and that words, of course, that actually say those things. When I read this, it reminded me of something that has happened several times in my own home, where I've come home and something else has happened in my day that has made me so heavy, or so short, or angry, or whatever. And I'll come in and I've seen my children shrink from me to where I'd actually had to say, "I'm not angry with you." I know I look angry. I've been at Home Affairs for five hours. "I'm not angry with you. You did a good job." And I can see them, oh! When I walked in the door, just from my posture and my appearance, they took something else away from it that was not actually for them. And when I say, "It's not you, it's somebody else." And sometimes I can say, "Can you pray for me? I'm having a rough time." And they will. And I thought that was a great thing to point out with the praise, not just with our words. So the second thing that Gary mentioned, what about rewarding your children? Sorry, I didn't get it. Praise your children for respect and then reward your children for respect. Gary mentions in Psalm 84, verse 11, "No good thing will he withhold from them that walk uprightly." And he connects the giving of good gifts because your child has done something good. Now without using bribery, how could I give a good gift because you have done right? Do you ever give good gifts to Hendrick? Yeah?
You're getting ahead of me, but no. I wrote, you know, "How do we give good things because we are good?" Gifts unattached. I have a, I have a good son and a bad son. No, not John and Jacob, hypothetically. Say I have two sons. I want to give good things to both sons because I am good. But then I also want to give good things when they do good. How do I do that? Help me out. So the reward is not monetized, it's value-oriented. Okay, so we give an ice cream to our kids when they finish, but the real benefit of that is, I get the ice cream. The real benefit is I, it forces me, I mean, it's a good way, to pick a day to take them after school, and I spend an afternoon with them. So we'll go get an ice cream now, or if you want it to go until Saturday, I'll go after lunch with you. And so it motivates me. That's the value of me. They just see the ice cream and that's fine. But sometimes I'm like, man, I haven't talked to Catherine by herself for six weeks. Not like this, you know? So to assign value, not just a monetary thing, that's a great example. Anybody else? How do I give good gifts because I'm good, whether they are good or not? And how do I give gifts because they have done what is right? And sorry, but that's very effective for early childhood development, and Julie. She still likes stickers. The child needs to see both of those. See both of those. "I'm good because I'm good," because God is that way. He makes the sun shine on the good and the evil, the rain. Were you gonna say something, Jerem? I think sometimes we can monetize it. You would have to measure the child. And I know a guy who, this was years ago, so he would give ten dollars to his son every time he read a book. Now Julie would have bankrupted her parents, so... But you know, you could set some type of a goal or something like that, if you're not trying to create covetousness. But I think both of these elements, I like that, I don't know if it's, if I'm taking too much. I sense that the child walked rightly first, and then he gave a good gift. And I remember when we were back in the States growing up, we had a house, I was thirteen in that home. No second term, I was fifteen. And for the summer, we couldn't get a summer job. Americans at fifteen and sixteen sometimes could, and we had tried. And so that summer, we helped my dad on the land for two months. And we hauled rock, literally, in a wheelbarrow. We lined an eight-hundred-foot driveway, two hundred, two hundred, three hundred, two hundred fifty meters? Driveway by hand, two and three meter wide driveway, gully with huge rock, just because we were McCrums. And at the end of it, he gave us a very sizable, in the hundreds of dollars, cash. And said, "You guys have worked so hard this summer. This is nothing compared to what you would have earned at a job. But I wanna know you..."
But I want to know you, you, you did a good thing. I've never held that much money in my life. And we later were like, ah. Had he told me that at the beginning, I don't think I would have worked. So the work was for other reasons. You're going to work because you're my son. This is our property. We work. And so it had a different attachment in my life. And it made a, it just made a huge impact on me. I see you have done well and I want to give you this. All right, let's go then to show respect. And we've got five areas here. And I think we can easily contextualize some of these very uniquely to South Africa. But first of all, a more general one that's outside of culture or a country, the authority of Scripture. And I love what Paul said, again, this is not, this is an adult relationship in 1 Corinthians 11. He is not talking about actually Father to Son. He's talking about, I have been your father in the faith. I have mentored you, I've walked with you. And he says, follow me even as I follow Christ. Well, if my children don't see me follow the Lord, they're not going to. If they don't see that I submit to Scripture, they're not going to. And we looked at the Deuteronomy passage, Deuteronomy 6. Ah, where he talked about, you know, the frontlets between your eyes and on your hand, so that you're showing and demonstrating. Here he gives us another one specifically to kings. They were, they were to take the example here, that he had his own written copy of the Scriptures. And, and that was an incredibly rare expensive thing. So the king had his own copy or was supposed to. But our children should see this, that if the Scriptures rebuke me, we can learn as a family. You can enter into discussions with your family. Like, we as a family are not doing well here with our tongue, with our language. We're not swearing at each other, but, or maybe we are, we need to stop that, or. But you know what? Our language is just always crass. It's always cutting. It's always cruel. But you know what? Let's, and Daddy and Mom are going to work on that and let's, let's fix that. And they're learning that Scripture is also Daddy's and Mommy's boss. That's a very helpful, very healthy perspective for your children to see. And because you're at church on a Wednesday night, I'm going to assume that you do understand that already, or at least that principle, whether or not you're doing it, I'm hoping I can move on. Any question or contradiction here? Okay, okay, what about to your spouse? Now, here he is just highlighting two passages. The one says that she should reverence her husband. And then here he also gives the one, and he should give honor to the wife. And so yes, he doesn't put 3 verse 1 and 3 verse 5 that talks about submission, nor does he put the three verses that tell him to love. I think he's just showing, as he did in a list earlier, the Bible says the wife should honor her husband, but it also says the husband should honor the wife. I think husbands and wives both deserve honor and they both deserve love. But it does tend to do, speak one more than the other two each. And it doesn't mean, I just have to love you, I don't have to honor you. Well, I just have to submit. No, we both give each other both. And I think it counsels us in our unique difficulty. But where are my sons going to learn how to be a dad? They can learn it and they should learn it for men in the church and how to treat women. They should learn it from a coach. They should learn it from a teacher. But they should learn it from me. They should learn, uh, how does a wife and husband disagree and yet still give each other honor? And can I get a show of hands? Everybody has to vote on this. How many of you think it's healthy for your children to see disagreement or argument between spouses? You think it's healthy? Hands up. One, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, how many think it's unhealthy and all disagreements and arguments should be hidden? Okay, one, two. Lindy, did you vote? Oh, okay, okay. So depending on the content, okay, you both think it shouldn't be. Why? Give me, give me an example that says this would be inappropriate. Without being too specific. I've seen that same face in my kids and I know I've gone too far. Okay. That, I've seen that face many times where Julie's at, and we're like, we've gone too far. We, we let it, even though we may still be honoring each other, we're letting too much heat or too much, and the children are actually worried. Yeah. Okay, so we're getting some good help here. So you're going to say content would determine that? You're going to say frequency would determine that? Or maybe even the sensitivity of the child? One child might break down and cry if they see, and another child may not. Yeah, what's going on here? So you both say yes? Give me an example of why you think it's in a wholesome way? Okay. Okay. Would you? Well, how's that going? Okay, so for sake of the recording, uh, we have, uh, you need to measure the content, the frequency, the sensitivity of the child. But the, the good part about it is you needed to see good conflict resolution. Would you say some content should not be discussed in front of the children? And frequency? So we're giving, we're contextualizing our answers. Okay, from the back? Uh, okay, so they need, they need to see it true to the end. Okay. Julie and I have not always done this well or right. And, uh, but, uh, so sometimes we've said, you know what? We need to finish this later, you know, the, uh, or sometimes I can't think of a specific situation, but I know we have actually gone back to the children or put them to bed at that night when it got too much. And said, I just want, Mommy and I do love each other. And we're sorry that it got too hot or whatever, and we're going to sort it out. And I can see their face. Okay, I just need to make sure. You don't know what they're getting at school or what they're hearing on TV. If they're doing that, maybe something else is going to happen. Yes, Mommy? Really? So even if you're happy and too animated, she's concerned, it does affect her. So yeah, uh, some children very sensitive, but the ones who aren't sensitive, it may still be really affecting them deeply and you don't, you're not aware of it. So I do think they need to, they do need to learn conflict management. And maybe as they get older, you allow more content or things like that. But in our house, we've got a lot of variants in age. And so we certainly don't get it right all the time. I think Bernard, you and I have talked about this before, how much do we share? And if we've gone too far or shared too much, then maybe just a follow up with them. But they need to see honor. Honor amidst disagreement. Honor amidst, you know, and they, honor, I love that word, honor, because maybe somebody got angry, maybe somebody did this. But there must be a mutual respect of the husband and the wife. Now this one certainly we can contextualize uniquely in South Africa. What about in society? Think about the school system. Think about government. Think about variety in culture and ethnicity. Can you think of any scenarios where it might be easily, easy to, uh, be disrespectful in the school system, government, culture or ethnicity? Yes, Corley? Generations, okay. In the African, you never, a man should never put his hands in his pockets. I do, so that would be, I think the younger African community would be less of it. Okay, generation? Uncle, uncle. Yeah. Okay. We have that in the church where, um, some people will insist on calling me Pastor David and some people want to call me first name and they want their children to call me first name. Um, we have that. So then there's also the parental thing. So we have adults who have told our children, you can just call me first name. I can't. I'll say, sorry, I, I understand that. I'm asking you to please say uncle and auntie. And then that puts that other parent, but they've been gracious and, you know, we understand. But they are my children, so I want them to learn that. Because my children get in trouble every time we go back or to America. My children, we come back from the States, they get chewed out at school and called to the office for disrespect. We go to America, we get called out because we're saying the wrong thing. So you have a unique situation where it's okay, but I need to show honor. I need to show honor. Okay, think about in a school system, you have a teacher, a coach, a headmaster. Are these worthy of honor only if they're good people? Only if they're respectful? The answer is no. Yes, Clive? Okay. You accept the traffic fine, no problem. Yeah. He, he does bear the sword. And do you think the Roman government always bore the sword? Honestly, appropriately? If you think about the tax collection system in the Jewish community, you know, Jesus rebuked the tax collectors. So if you have a problem with SARS, it is so much easier than what they had in Jesus' day. The tax collector was allowed to charge whatever he wanted, as long as he paid Rome their, their cash. So it is important to remember that, yeah, but you, you don't live in South Africa. Well, you don't live in America or Trump. You don't live, frig, how come where you live? The New Testament had it so much worse. And yet that long list of verses I read, oh. Honor, honor, honor. So you didn't have to obey the Roman government if they said, you know, bow down or whatever, but you still gave them honor. You can dispute the traffic, fine. You can tell them, Stenbisa got his first traffic ticket this week ever. I'm not supposed to be glad, but I was like. And he, I think he was hopefully able to get it cut in half, you know? But whether they are right or wrong, they are an authority figure. I can dispute things honorably. I can disagree, I can protest honorably. I cannot allow that to be a cause for damage to public property, to take things into my own hands vengefully. I, I have to show honor. And this is something that I've noticed in our Baki conversations, that we contend to as parents, only critique what is going bad at the school. And we have an excellent school. We have a fantastic edness. We got great teachers. But we never drive home thinking, hasn't that a great teacher? Man, that's just a wonderful person. We only discuss the school if, man, that was wrong. And I can see it because my child the next week says the same thing. Like, wait a minute, but this school has been very kind to us. They've been very generous to us. They've done this for us, but we don't discuss that in the Baki. And they're catching a disrespect of a fantastic institution. Same thing with the government. I'm only ever talking bad, I'm only ever, and it's easy to, to critique, isn't it? It's easy, it's always easy to tear it down. But let us also teach them, we're trying to teach, this is under the heading of, of showing respect. If they see me also speak in society about, in the school system, that's a, a good authority figure structure. Government, a good authority structure figure. Culture and ethnicity will, will act upon these things differently. And then we could stay there a long time, but in the church. And I must say, at FVC, I've never sensed a spirit of anarchy or we do our own thing. I've always been amazed, especially coming here early in ministry. Julie and I hadn't been married a year. We had no children, Brother Clive, somebody's at the gate. And that Brother Stanley, who was in his late 60s, Brother August, who was in his late 50s, Brother Richard was in his 50s, uh, my dad. And I had men all in my father's age. When I became a pastor, they treated me with this, this respect. Pastor David, what would you like to see? How can we handle it? They, that had to have been difficult for them. I, I look at it differently now, back then. Yeah, I am, no. But they didn't, they showed me such respect. They, they purposefully, they served us. What can we do for you? And, and that has been my set, the sentiment I have seen at this church, not just to the pastoral leadership, but, but generally even culturally, I've generally seen that. And we want to encourage it. And there are different ways cultures, uh, would demonstrate that in the church. But the, the role, the goal here is honor. I want to get to the last one here to, to your children. How do we honor our children? How do we show honor to our children? And he, 1 Thessalonians 2:7, he's, this is also an adult relationship. I think these lessons are very applicable, not just to our children, but to those whom we have a authority figure, authority relationship or mentoring relationship. We were gentle among you, even as a nurse cherished their children. Certainly there's an attitude of honor there. And this, this chapter in the book had some really great things. I want to read a quote, it's a paragraph. When he's talking about how we correct our children, but how we need to correct them honorably. That's an interesting concept. He says, um, and I'm paraphrasing here, even in correction, we don't want to arrive at either of the extremes of anger or passivity. And he says, quote, whatever type of correction you use to redirect your child's heart, whichever one, there is one thing you can add that will render it ineffective and create tox, toxicity in your relationship, anger. Any correction when administered in anger breeds rebellion and loss of respect by your child. If you cannot control your own spirit, your child senses that and the correction has the opposite effect you intended. You may succeed in changing her or his immediate behavior. You may change your behavior. But the seeds of rebellion can take root in their heart. Ah, that was so good. I just parented the behavior. And so one of the best ways to deal with anger, and I don't know if it's men who struggle with this more, I certainly struggle with it, I think, more than Julie, or at least demonstrates itself differently. And that is delay. Delay, don't delay too long, but you can ask your child, not, go to your room. Not, not for their sake, but for your sake. Not, not for their sake, but for your sake. And I remember that some, probably the two longest days of my life, one happened when I was four years old, and one when I was five. When I was four years old, I could see that house. And it's interesting, I only have a few memories from the house, but I have this one. "I don't know what I did, but my mother, who didn't get angry often, but angry, gets to go to your room." She was so, I can still see her, I couldn't look. And I laid on that bed, it felt like hours and days, till I finally timidly came out of the room. And I can see her face, though I was four years old, she just, she said, "Oh, I forgot, I sent you there." "No, come on out." "It was for her sake, not mine." "I have no idea what I did, I probably hadn't done something wrong, I'd probably just been a four-year-old boy." But it was actually, she was called. The second one, I was five years old, and my father was putting the, what are those boards that curve on the end of a roof burner? The barsboard, and my dad was at the peak, and I climbed up the ladder into the attic, climbed up the rafters, got on the roof. He was leaning over the peak, and I came up to him and said, "Dad." And he yelled at me, "Get off of here." And I think he back, he didn't even walk me back down, he was like, "Get off of here." You know, any normal father at that point would take you down, he didn't. "Get out of here." I got down, and he threatened all the way down. And when I got down, I was waiting for my dad, came down, and somebody pulled in the driveway. And so my dad, I sit by my dad's chair the whole time while he's having tea with this person, you know, to counsel them or whatever. And it must have been hours, probably ten minutes, biding my mom. And then he got up, and he forgot all about it, and maybe processed, he wasn't actually bad. And so to honor our children, sometimes the delay is actually that we can wrap, we can process what has happened. And another tactic is to talk to your spouse. Julie and I concluded very early in parenting, our children are alive today because we haven't thrown them out the window or wanted to on the same day. As long as, you know, I'm wanting to get rid of them, she says, "No, let's keep them another day." And then, and the spouse can be so helpful to say, "Was I too hard? What should we do here?" Because maybe they haven't, sometimes you'll come home from work and he's, "I need to talk to you, someone's in the room." And that can be helpful to dispel some of the heat. And so really delay, and then trust your spouse to correct you, or at least say, "Look, I think you may have been too hard there, or let's do this." And so those are some of the effective ones. In conclusion, he gives another great list at the close of this chapter, how to practically guarantee that your child will rebel. When they hear their parents criticize authority, if that's what your parents, your children always hear from you, criticizing every authority. "Ah, they don't do it right, they don't do it right." Maybe they didn't do it right, but they take away authority as bad. When they see their parents violating scripture consistently, openly, when they feel their parents do not love one another, or honor each other, when they are not disciplined for disobedience, when the child keeps getting away with things and is never brought to, sorry, you do have to obey your mother and father. They actually lose respect for the parents. Number five, when they are rewarded materially in spite of bad behavior. So this isn't because I'm good, just, ah, whatever, you can have, you know? "I told you only get this if you're good, but you were bad, but I don't care, shut up, here's the, whatever." Number six, when they are compensated materially by parents who pity them. If we give good things because we have pity, instead of because we are good or they are good. Number seven, when they are allowed to participate in activities which they were told that they would not enjoy unless they obeyed. And so the idea that you set some boundaries, they went across the boundaries, and you still let them go and do all those things. You're creating an environment. And whether you buy the book or not, it's a good book, it is a simple book, it's easy to read. This one has so many good things about correction, but specifically under honor. I was surprised, he had so much about that. All right, that's great. Lord, we ask you to help us to show honor to you, to authority, to our spouses, to our children, in our society, as best we know how, cultures and ethnicities that differ with us in these smaller areas of demonstrating honor. And Lord, we pray that when we fail, we would apologize to you and to those in our home, and just get back up again and go another day with you. And pray to Jesus and God bless you.